All right, it is time to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular planning commission of October 28th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. The next thing on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission regarding items that are not currently on the agenda. So do we have anybody here who'd like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? It's a small agenda. All right, if no one wants to do that, great. We'll move on to the next thing, which is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes to approve the agenda. The next thing on the agenda is the public hearing to consider an amendment to the plans for the RF-64 apartment and townhome project along 16th Avenue and Richfield Parkway, between approximately Taft Park and 65th Street. The proposed revision will reduce the number of townhomes constructed from 72 to 64. Staff?
Thank you, Commissioner. On September 25th, 2018, the city council unanimously approved plans by NHH Properties to redevelop the area south of Taft and across from the Cedar Point Commons commercial area as multifamily housing. This area has been a redevelopment priority for many Richfield city councils for many, many years as a result of airport expansion in the early 2000s. Given the extended period of time that the city has been actively pursuing redevelopment of this area and the long period of uncertainty that the homeowners had endured, the city council and HRA both voted to move forward with the proposal despite the fact that three properties were not yet under contract. The proposed development included two four-story apartment buildings along Richfield Parkway and 18 four-unit buildings of for-sale townhomes along 16th Avenue. The development was designed to provide an enhanced buffer from the airport for the older single-family homes to the west, but also to create a cohesive neighborhood feel and transition between the existing homes and the new development. Plans were also specifically designed to allow the project to move forward even if the developer was not able to purchase all of the homes. This possibility was discussed in staff reports and presented to the planning commission and the city council. At the time of the initial request for approval, the developer had control of all but three of the remaining privately-owned homes, all on the southern half of the development. And just a point of clarification, at the time of the planning commission meeting, they needed control of four additional homes. By the time we had moved on to the city council, it was three. The developer has been unable to come to an agreement with just one homeowner. 6433 16th Avenue is not under contract, and they have thus returned with a request to amend plans to work around this property. This reduces the number of proposed townhomes to 64 for the time being. However, the proposed design allows for the eventual construction of the eight additional units should the developer and homeowner reach an agreement sometime in the future. The developer remains open to continuing negotiations with that homeowner. However, at this time, the asking price is not financially feasible or reasonable given that the HRA will be contributing to the proposal through tax increment financing. Our housing inspection staff has been working with the homeowner to bring the remaining home into compliance with our rental licensing requirements. There are no zoning variations related to this proposed amendment. The configuration in which 6433 16th remains positions the adjacent townhomes such that setback requirements between the new buildings and the existing house are exceeded. The townhomes will be 83 feet away from the home on the south and 48 feet on the north. There will also be five parking stalls that will not be constructed in this revised scenario. However, available parking for the apartment project remains above our required minimums. The resolution that's attached to your packet does allow for the construction of the final eight townhomes on the property at 6433 16th if the developer and the property owner are able to agree to terms. So staff finds that this proposed amendment with the potential is in keeping with the scenario that was forecast last year and recommends approval of the proposed amendment. The developer is here for questions, and staff will also stand for questions.
Okay, great, let's open up the public hearing. If we have people in the audience who would like to speak about this, you can just go up to the podium, make sure to sign in, and each person will have two minutes. And if you do have questions, we won't answer them now, we'll just answer them at the end. Anybody would like to speak on that? Okay, and just state your name and sign in there, please.
I guess I'm just curious, what about the, maybe this isn't the place to ask, but the apartment buildings, are those still going ahead?
Just to clarify which apartment buildings you're talking about.
The four-story apartment buildings that are going to be on the east side of that block?
Yes, they are.
Any idea when?
Perhaps you could invite the developer up for a timeline update.
Okay, yes, would the developer like to go up for a timeline update? And maybe he can answer those questions for you? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, city staff. My name is Adam Seraphine with NHH Properties. I am one of the developers for the RF-64 project. As far as current status of the project goes, I'll just list through some of the major bullet points. And if you have any questions in regards to any of them, please let me know. So, all of the homes that were purchased in 2018 and 19 have now been demoed and removed from the site. The stormwater connections for the site-wide stormwater system have been completed on 65th Avenue. These stormwater connections are to the benefit of both the townhomes and the two proposed apartment buildings. The above-ground utility connections, which primarily relate to the above-ground lines that you will see running down the center of the site north to south, have all been coordinated with the three utility providers, and those will be coming down and being relocated within the next 30 days. The first two townhome buildings comprising of eight total units, four units per building, are now topped out, meaning they are completely framed. Trusses were going on this morning and should be completed by mid-next week. Those two buildings will be complete for delivery to potential homeowners in February and March of 2020. The submissions for the next four buildings, so four buildings of four townhomes each, so for a total of 16 units, will happen within the next 30 days. We are substantially complete within the planning process and now need to submit to the inspection department. We are on track to close on the apartment site in March of 2020, and the corresponding site work and vertical construction will happen shortly thereafter. I believe the contract allows us 60 to 90 days to begin, but we will begin right after closing.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to get up and speak? All right, thank you. So, would commissioners like to speak, or do I need to close this part of the public hearing before? Okay, so we can close this part of the public hearing? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion moved, close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's have some discussion on that. Does anybody have any discussion on that?
On closing the public hearing, or just the general, we closed the public hearing?
Discussion before that.
Okay.
So we can close the public hearing, yes, it's moved.
It's probably uncontroversial.
Thank you.
I did want to ask, just a process thing about why we're seeing the application now. I think this question came up online because obviously construction's been ongoing. So I guess I'm curious why this amendment didn't happen before construction started, but also it was happening sort of midway through.
Sure, as a point of order, can we vote on closing the public hearing?
We already did.
We did.
Oh, you did, sorry, I missed that, okay. Why is the application coming now?
Yeah.
The hope has always been that they would be able to purchase that last home. The hope was really that once construction started, perhaps that homeowner would realize that this is actually moving forward. There have been several false starts on this property over a long period of time when we thought something might move, and so that was the hope, that's why this is coming now.
Okay, I guess my other question is what happens to the property? So if this is approved, this is no longer part of the development right now. If that homeowner wanted to build something else on that site, how does this limit them? Or what are their options with their property that remains separate from this?
Right, so the home has already been rezoned, that property was rezoned as part of the development. So their ability to add on to their home is now limited. They're allowed to keep it indefinitely and repair and maintain it, but to do something different would require approvals by the planning commission and city council.
And they're zoned as part of a PUD now, or they're multifamily, or what?
They are zoned PMR, which is Planned Multifamily Residential, yes.
Okay.
I have a question about the setback. It said that it exceeded the setback, you know, 83 to the south and 48 to the north. What are the normal setbacks?
The required setback in the single-family district is five feet. So, and the setbacks from the existing neighbors, actually the homes have been removed now, but it was roughly 25 feet, I believe, 30 feet?
So there's much more space, there will be much more space between the existing house that's going to stay and the townhomes?
Correct, the setbacks are much larger than they were previously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the city. Given the nature of this particular development and the, I guess, the stages that could occur based on when the development or when the properties become available, has the city executed or considered like a performance covenant or a completion guarantee with the developer to ensure that if this property became available in the next whatever years, that these condos would eventually be built? My fear is that, you know, right now, they have the economies of scale, they have the project management and the subcontractors all on site. Six years from now, seven years from now, may be very different environment in terms of construction costs or whatever their priorities may be. And I would like to see if there would be some assurance contractually that would force them to come back and complete these as presented.
Maybe the developer can speak to that. It is addressed in the memo that was in the narrative. Adam, did you want to speak?
I read the narrative, but I didn't understand or get the, I guess I didn't get a sense that there was any contractual liability to come back and complete these.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so the property, the majority of the property out there is owned by the Richfield HRA. There were obviously some properties that were owned by individuals as well. The development agreement with the HRA that includes the sale of the HRA property does not have anything contractual that would require the developer to purchase that property, nor is there anything punitive in it, to my knowledge. I would say that we have looked at the numbers and it's a, it would be very financially advantageous for the developer to do so in a window of time. And that window of time would be while they're already out there staged for construction. When unit number 64 is completed at the north end of the block and everybody, you know, packs up their school bags and drives off, then you would incur staging costs all over again. So we have not amended the HRA's development agreement, though. So, I hope that answers the question.
Well, I mean, it answers my question, but I'm a little, I guess discouraged that that hasn't been approached with the developer because, I mean, I see us, if this doesn't get sold in the next five years and maybe sold eight years down the road, that we have no assurance that they will come back and complete the condos as, you know, displayed here or presented here, that they would. And I'm not talking like a surety bond or, you know, any sort of completion-esque row, but at least maybe a guarantee or something in writing that would compel them to come back to the table and make sure that we're in these discussions to complete that.
From a planning and zoning perspective, there's nothing that could be put in this particular resolution that could require that. You can certainly talk to your HRA commissioners and let them know that that's something that you think they should consider. However, that isn't something that would be considered tonight.
Would it be fair for us to recommend approval with such a document being executed?
You are recommending to the city council, not the HRA.
Right, and that's, I mean, would it be appropriate for this committee to recommend approval for this with such a document being executed to the city council?
We can certainly pass on your concerns to the HRA, but attaching that to this resolution would not be appropriate, no. This is the land use consideration.
So it would be a straight decline then if I decide not to go forward with it as-is?
Pardon me?
It would be a straight no, rather than attaching an amendment or some sort of additional verbiage to say that. I'd feel more comfortable going passing this as-is with at least the discussion or the recommendation to HRA or city council to execute such a document.
We would certainly pass along that recommendation. One of the problems inherent in it is that I know to most residents that the HRA and the city seem to be one and the same. Legally speaking, the HRA is a completely different body from the city of Richfield. It's almost like as different as the school board is from the city. And so it, I don't want to speak for the city attorney or the HRA attorney, but I don't believe that the planning commission or the city council can make approvals, their approvals contingent on the HRA taking an action. I'm not positive of that, but that's my suspicion.
And maybe I don't quite understand, the HRA owns the land right now? They don't own the land right now?
No, they own much of the land.
Right.
And that they're selling the land, they're also giving a, providing some financial assistance. And that's the only, other than the agreements that the developer had with individual homeowners, which I believe that they've all remedied all those agreements, and those agreements no longer exist. The only agreement remaining would be with the Richfield HRA that would apply to the sale of properties.
But this is the approval for the final development plan, right? What we got in front of us tonight is for the final development plan.
That's correct, you're making a recommendation on an amendment to the final development plan, yes.
And we have to accept as-is without any ability to add a recommendation to the city council, HRA, or whoever. Having an executed document of some sort that would compel the developers to come back to Richfield at some point to complete this development is not an option for us?
Again, I hate to speak for our attorneys. I think it's possible for you to recommend something including a city council action. So if you made a recommendation to approve this with the provision that the city takes some specific action, I think that that's possibly something you could do. I do not think that you could approve this with the provision that the HRA takes some action because it's a legally separate entity.
And also, just, I believe it was in the staff report, but the HRA agreement with the developer is to construct 64 or more townhomes. So 64 to, so the amendment to remove these eight units is within the parameters of the existing agreement.
And I get that, I just, I feel that there's nothing binding us, the city and this developer from, you know, I mean, they'll say we can, you know, best efforts and, you know, even if it's 10 years from now, we have the plotting available to complete it, but there's nothing in here. The city has no leverage or hooks to get this developer to come back in 10 years if that lot would become available either to HRA, to the city, or the developer to compel them to come and finish the project. There's nothing here that would force that to happen.
That's correct, there is nothing here that would force that to happen. It will be in the developer's best interest to do so, considering they already have the plans. It's going to be, I mean, by the time you're getting to those last units, it's just profit. You've done it so many times, it's in the developer's best interest for their development as a whole to do this. But you're right, this resolution does not include something that would require them to come back to do that.
But, Madam Chair and Commissioners, you know, I'm the executive director of the HRA, and I will certainly bring this to their attention at their next meeting, this concern. And, you know, we can explore it, what kind of steps we could take as an HRA, or what kind of steps the developer could take.
One second.
And that could take many forms, you know, a right of first refusal or something, but again, that would require some acceptance from the property owner.
Good evening.
One moment, please, did you have something to say before?
I do, and I think this goes back to the last time we met on this, where, you know, it's really concerning where we talked about, I think, this exact scenario happening. And I believe at the time, we had asked the developer what would happen if he did not acquire all the properties, and at that time, there was four properties that had not been acquired yet. And we got the response from the developer that he would not build to the south if he did not, because I think at that time, most of the properties, what we were concerned about was any remaining properties getting built around. And he gave us the assurances that, you know, he would not build to the south. And I think at that time, we were all kind of relieved that that wouldn't happen because it wouldn't look good, you know? But now we're coming back with one property not being acquired to change this. And with Commissioner Levin speaking, as far as, you know, something from the city's end or protecting the city's end, you know, I feel like, you know, we were told what was needed at the time to get approval. And now we're here discussing approving something that we tried to head off previously.
Can I just, John?
Let me, can I just address, because I did go back and review the video from the meeting 15 months ago. And Commissioner Rudolph is right. In the discussion from the developer, at the time when there were four homes that were not under contract, the developer said, "If we don't acquire those houses, Earl, it wouldn't work." And a further question about, would you move forward? And his answer is, "We will not do that." I was here at the meeting, I heard that, and I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. What I thought I heard the developer saying is, "If we don't acquire those houses," meaning all four, "then we wouldn't do it." So after the developer spoke, I said, "I don't know that the four remaining houses are a package. It's possible they could reach agreement with three, or two, or one. And I think that they would probably go back and evaluate their plans based on how many of those they did buy. What I'm hearing is that if they could not buy any of the four, they would probably stop at that point. If they could buy a portion thereof, again, they would consider that." And so I tried to clarify, my belief at the time that, you know, because there is no eminent domain, there is no way to force all of those homeowners to sell without moving forward. The development, at that point in time, the development would not have been able to move forward at all without taking some steps. So I wanted to go back and try to clarify my belief. And, you know, we may not have all been on the same page, but my intent was to clarify my belief that if there were something less than four, they probably would construct the property as shown.
Thank you, John. I think it was my understanding at the time that, you know, if they didn't acquire all the properties, they would, I guess, stop at that point. You know, now being, you know, they're close to the south end, and they're, I think, started on the south end, so.
So the site really lays itself to start at the north end? And what's the beauty of this holdout is if it had to be a holdout, this is the perfect holdout because the first pod is tying into 65th and all the utilities work, and first pod can stand alone, independent on its own. Had we not been able to buy four houses, the project would not have been able to start. So this holdout is almost a perfect holdout because you can continue forward. But to address your concern about, would we remobilize and come back? Now, the city and the HRA gave that great consideration, and we had a lot of discussion around that. And that is why when we did get approved for TIF, in their foresight, they put in three different phases for TIF notes. So we had to accomplish 32 units to get the first set of TIF, another additional 32 units to get another TIF note, and then 16, which was above and beyond our development agreement because it is, again, as John stated, only for 64 units, a third TIF note to come back and do those 16 units. So there's incentive right there for the developer to come back. Not that we wouldn't be, we would not be opposed to, you know, contractually saying we would make all of our best efforts to come back, but there is an incentive, and it was the discussion that we had, that what if? You know, because it's not a guarantee that you're going to be able to purchase all 15 homes and do a perfect site assembly, you know, that's just continuous. So that's in every development, so there was that foresight and that thought put to that.
I think, I agree with you. I see how that was laid out when the original approval occurred, and I think maybe that was the opportunity Richfield had at that point to insert some sort of contingency plan if all units were not addressed and in an effort to complete the development as presented, even allowing construction to continue in the event that you don't have all properties under your wing at the time. Now, I guess what I'm bringing up now is if it's too late to insert something like that at this point, but certainly I think lessons have been learned. Richfield's been burned like this before where we have a single property that hasn't been sold and it sticks out like a sore thumb.
I think it goes to speak for us in our sales as well when they're asking, "Well, what is going to be, you know, down the road with this site?" So it's also our, you know, for our benefit to continue, which we are, except for we're so far apart in price.
I think in the near term, everyone would agree it would probably be in your best interest to complete it. I'm thinking six, seven years down the road, if it becomes available and your trucks are gone and it's been, you know, it's been a kind of a stagnant project for years, would you come back and actually complete that?
Yeah, there's incentive, there's a phase three TIF note that, you know, covers your gap.
I have a question for the developer. I have one more question for you. I had a little bit of trouble with these diagrams, but how many units are to each side of that home?
There is 16 on one side, and then the balance are all on the third side of the home.
Okay, so two structures to one side?
Two structures.
Okay, and then four to the, or how many to the other?
There would be six.
Okay.
There'd be 12.
Okay, all right, thank you. I thought, I was wondering if there was just one, but if there's two, yeah, all right, thanks.
I think that I just wanted to say to Commissioner Rudolph's point that if the, I feel like probably the majority of the planning commissioners, maybe if it's first-time planning commissioners or it's newer, are, were under the assumption that if all of the houses weren't purchased, then they would not build to the south. So I guess that also just goes to Commissioner Levin's point about, like, it's not necessarily super reassuring to just take the word of like, "Yes, we'll be back in six to seven years to build the home." So just wanting to say that. Do we have any other comments?
Director Stark, so does the HRA have that authority, do you know, to add on some sort of condition about, I don't know, about seven years, but even, you know, in the next few years? Do they have that authority even?
Most of the HRA's abilities are to provide incentives.
Most of the HRA's abilities are to provide incentives rather than to regulate. So we did, as the developer mentioned, we held out the last portion of the tax increment that they would have to build the last units to get the remainder. I'm not aware of anything that would force the developer to purchase that property. But I can, I can talk to the attorney about that and see if they have any ideas.
What does that last TIF portion represent dollars wise?
I don't have the figures here. Yeah. So I'm hearing the, the final TIF note was three hundred thousand would be the la, the portion of the last TIF note that would be applied to this.
I just have a question for staff, maybe to advise Planning Commission. So we have a couple of other developments going on in Richfield right now or in process. And so if a development comes before the Planning Commission and the completion of it is dependent upon the purchase of homes that are not currently purchased or not currently owned by the developer, should that be something that the Planning Commission is a little bit more strict about in terms of, because it seems like it's come up more than one time in the past year?
Chair Holberg. This is an unusual situation. This is an area that was a development priority for the city council for, you know, close to two decades. And that's why it moved forward before all of the properties were under contract. In general, we do not bring a proposal to you where the developer does not have the properties under contract. By the time you're seeing it, they have some agreement in place with those property owners. They won't have closed. They'll obviously be contingent, but there is an agreement in place. This, to my knowledge, is the only time we have brought something before you where the developer did not have control.
The only similar situation is at the Havenwood where there's one remaining house. Everybody, it was crystal clear at the beginning of that, that that was not a willing seller. And so when we came to the Planning Commission, when we went to the HRA, when we went to the city council, there was no ambiguity. This, this property will remain. So that was a difference in that.
Thank you. All right. Well, do we have any other comments from planning commissioners or questions? No? All right. Are we ready to make a recommendation?
I, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the resolution that approves an amended PUD conditional use permit and final development plan for this multifamily apartment and townhome development to be built on property legally described as blocks one and two and Iverson's second addition.
Second.
All right. All in favors? Any discussion?
I, I'd just like to say that I will be voting no unless we can attach some sort of verbiage or a recommendation to the city to pursue a commitment from the developer that goes beyond just their word that they'll come back and develop over a period of whatever years is decided upon.
Yeah, I just, I was thinking about, you know, what you were saying with that and obviously your, your vote is your own. But in thinking about what staff said about our ability as a land use, we're looking at this from a land use perspective. For me, that means that we should see this, what we're considering tonight, the same, whether that agreement exists or it doesn't exist because we're looking at the land use. And I think everybody agrees that this is unfortunate. It would be, it would be nice if both parties could come to an agreement. But obviously I, I seconded it, so I will be voting for it. I, I think it makes the most sense under the circumstances.
And like I said, it was, it would be a recommendation for the city as we're a recommending body.
Can we attach that recommendation to the city council?
The city council does not vote on that. The city council will vote on the land use considerations just like you are voting on that. It would be the HRA that would vote on some sort of contingency or.
And we can't attach a recommendation to the HRA because they're separate from us.
Correct. Your recommendation here does not go to the HRA. It goes to the city council.
Okay. I think maybe also the question would be, is that how, is there a way for the Planning Commission to say like, yes, we are, you know, voting for approval, however, this is a big concern?
Yes, absolutely. It will be reflected in the minutes, quite obviously. And the message will be passed on by the executive director directly to the HRA. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It is in the record.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor say aye. Not in favor, say nay.
Nay.
All right. The motion passes. So, let's see here. Would you like me to read it? My screen zoomed out.
I'm sorry, Chair Holberg. Read what?
Would you like me to read the, reread the motion that passed?
No, I don't think you need to do that unless, unless you want to clarify.
No, I do not want to, it passes as the city recommended.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So let's move to the next item on the agenda, which is to continue a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Richfield Bloomington Honda Conditional Use Permit Final Development Plans and Planned Unit Development to December ninth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Chair Holberg. And once again, we're asking the Planning Commission just to continue this item to the next meeting. It has been published as a public hearing. So we are required to continue or cancel that public hearing. Honda continues to work with MINDOT staff and city staff to explore their options on the Frontage Road. They'll be making a final proposal. We hope to have that before you in December. If not, we will cancel the public hearing at that time and republish when we're ready to move forward with that. So at this time, they are just not ready. Their application is not complete.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved. I motion to continue the public hearing to consider the amendment to the Conditional Use Permit Final Development Plans and Plan New Development, Planned Unit Development at five oh one seventy-seven Street West, which is Richfield Bloomington Honda, and move that to December ninth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. So next up on the agenda is the liaison reports. So the first one is the Community Services Advisory Commission.
No report.
All right. City council?
No report.
All right. Housing and redevelopment authority.
Yes, the HRA decertified two big projects, the Gramercy and the Interchange, decertified their tax increment financing, which is an increase to the net tax capacity and the city tax returns. It's good. And they came in ahead of schedule.
Do you know what the interchange one, is that Meridian Crossing or what building is that?
I don't know offhand. Sorry. The interchange is Dick's Sporting Goods.
All right. Next is the Richfield School Board.
Well, we have had an election since the last time we've met. We've got two incumbents that were reelected and we've got a new school board member that's going to be coming on board. The other news is the Sunshine Fund has received an enormous amount of support into paying off delinquent school accounts. I think they received more than twenty thousand dollars.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up is Transportation Commission.
Last month, it was pretty much all about four ninety-four. You guys probably know there's a four ninety-four project coming up in a couple of years. So the main things that MINDOT staff were there talking about were the additional lane. They'll be adding a lane in each direction and that lane will be a minpass lane. So toll during rush hour or available for car pools and buses. And the other thing that they considered was the interchange consolidation. So they, MINDOT does intend to move forward with their plan to close Nicollet and Twelfth Avenue ramps and consolidate to a new interchange at Portland Avenue. And the commission recommended, gave their thumbs up on both of those basically.
Great. Thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, I reached out and I talked to BJ, I might get his last name wrong, Skog or Scoog? Scoog. He replaced Ann Schultz as the head of the Chamber of Commerce last, last month. So I, I talked with him and filled him in with the developments that have come before this commission. And then also talked to him about any concerns that he was having or any developments that he would like to discuss. And the one thing that he mentioned is, is the Penn Avenue. He was at the Streets, Streets, Sweet Streets event at Sheridan. He's talked to some business owners and it, everyone's just kind of wondering what the final design's going to look like. He's just gathering some input. Obviously, that's a high traffic corridor and, and the businesses were, are very interested in how that'll, how that'll impact traffic flow. So that's the one thing that he mentioned, that he's kind of reaching out to some of those business owners. So, that's it.
Great. Thank you. I just have a quick question about the sweet, the Penn Avenue. So we're getting all this public input right now. And under what commission does that kind of get discussed or come out? Or will it be sort of a separate thing of, on its own?
Right. The Transportation Commission, there'll be separate presentations to them. It's really their purview. But the Planning Commission is welcome to come and participate in any of the open houses. That would be great. If you'd like to come and listen at the Transportation Commission, we're going to present to them in two weeks. And that'll be an update on what we heard at the Sweet Streets event a couple of weeks ago. There'll also be some summary documents put together that we'll share with everyone publicly. And so you can find out there too.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Next up on our agenda is the City Planner's Report.
And all I have to, well, the Sweet Streets event, if you're interested in hearing, was very successful for a road project in the future. Sometimes you don't get great turnout, but we had over a hundred people come and talk to us about Penn Avenue. So that was really exciting. And then just a reminder that tomorrow is a work session with the city council and the HRA to talk about a proposal for some new multifamily across the street from the Lyndale Garden Center at approximately sixty-three forty-five Lyndale. So that's right. Just north of the Lyndale Plaza building and across from the about to open Henley project. So I hope you can make it to that.
Great. That's great. So many people came out for the Penn Avenue. That's a lot of people. That's awesome to hear. The next meeting, time and location, as you said, there's a work session November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen at six PM in the Bartholomew Room. And then the next Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, December ninth, twenty nineteen at seven PM here. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.